Shouldn't be recording. Sorry. Yes. We're admitting everybody. We're live. You're live, but we're, she's admitting everybody.
One.
To me.
Okay. I would like to call the November fifteenth Regular Board of Trustees meeting to order at six thirty one P M. Can I get a roll call, call Martha and I won't ask anything else of you?
Okay. Obviously.
Here.
Here.
Here. And we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being with us this evening. We have some minutes to approve. I'm looking at October eighteenth. Trustees have any changes to make to those? I have a few changes, but I can't see them. Oh, there we go. Do you want me to start?
Hold on, let me get them pulled up. That was sent Sunday. Okay. Are we starting with October eighteen?
Yes. I am on page three. Paragraph four. Towards the bottom, it says Ms. Augustine added that the skills required for maintaining the website should receive a wage increase. And I just wanted to add as they are outside the scope of work for the position.
Part of the position, outside the works of the position?
Outside the scope of work for the position. Are the trustees in agreement?
That's right.
Yeah.
Page four. The paragraph underneath the three bullet points. Second paragraph, or I'm sorry, second sentence. She suggested the trustees make a resolution opposing the proposed interchange in order to alleviate traffic in Hinckley. And I wanted to add and potential crime.
You know what? I wrote it that way. You can do it either way, but I know that that crime conversation came after your, your original, so I.
I actually brought it up. I brought up the crime.
So I'm not, we can. Remember I put that, I put that on the discussion or something. I don't know. Maybe I didn't because it went on for a while.
It did go on for a while. Do you want to just take it out and leave it as is?
Um, but I mean, no, negative outcomes, um, which also included crime.
Perfect.
Okay. I don't, not want it in there. It is.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure we added it in there just because it was in the resolution.
Potential crime?
Yes, please. And then on page five, Martha, you weren't here. So under fiscal officer, it said, Ms. Catherwood stated the fun status, so I just added myself instead.
Yep, thank you.
And then the last paragraph under public, it said Carl Castle informed the trustees that any property, and I changed it to many.
Oh, yes, thank you.
And that is all I had.
It should be owners then.
Perfect.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any other changes or amendments? Okay. Um, I'm going to do a quick motion then. I'm going to make a motion. You want to do them at the same time?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, bear with me. The other one is November first. Do the trustees have any amendments to these minutes?
They do on page two. There we have just above zoning, maybe just change the spelling of my name.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
She's a fast typer.
I do it all the time.
Any other changes?
In the bottom of page three. Uh, working on revisions at the request of Mr. Gibson.
I'm not seeing that either.
Oh, I'm sorry, top of page four.
Top of four. Any other changes? Trustee Asher. I don't have any changes either. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two and the November first, twenty twenty-two trustee regular meeting minutes as amended. Seconded by Asher. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Perfect. Thank you, guys. And we will move right along to Police Chief Setner.
Good evening.
Evening.
I have three training requests on my agenda. I'm going to go over all three of those and we can make a motion. Trained approval to send patrolman Parente to the training course Women in Command hosted by the Wadsworth Police Department, conducted by Caliber Press, February seventh through eighth of twenty twenty-three for a total cost of three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. There are no additional costs as this class is being held in Wadsworth.
So moved.
Train approval for patrolman Palia for attending the Drive Team Emergency Response Operations Course Class. She attended this class on November third of twenty twenty-two at a total cost of two hundred and ninety-five dollars. This is a last minute request that was approved by trustee Sweating. Train approval for Detective Kenny to attend social media and open source investigations conducted by Street Cap Training in Walton Hills, Ohio, at Walton Hills P D at a total cost of two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Is that a one day class?
Yes, it's a one day class. And that is November twenty-first.
Very good.
Now, so moved.
Very good. Seconded by Astral. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did you have another one?
I don't, but I would like to have some brief discussion. I know it's on your agenda about the school speed limit. You know, the thirty-five zone ending at the hill. Um, in June of twenty twenty, we did address that issue prior to the school completion with ODOT about dropping that speed limit to thirty-five um, to go well north up to the church. The, the problem is the thirty-five mile an hour zones are, are dictated by Ohio Revised Code. And they just won't simply do it because we want them to. Um, it has to meet an urban district definition, which it does not. Now, we can ask them for a study again, but it's highly unlikely that they will ever approve that because it, it just doesn't meet the definition of what the code is to make that a thirty-five zone. I know there was some conversation back and forth last week while I was out of town about the speeding through the school zone. You know, uh, it's, we, we, we are there, we're doing the best we can. You know, it's a very small school zone, but we have issued citations there in the last few weeks for violators and by all means, I mean, if we can ask them for a survey, I'm sure they'll do it at some point, but I, I don't think they're really going to do it.
So in my conversation with ODOT, he said if the trustees are in agreement to do a study, they would do it. Reason being, you know, the old school was in a thirty-five. Everyone has become accustomed to it because it was so much closer to the center of town. And so because after you hit that, I think it's the animal hospital, does it bump up to like forty-five? Yeah. And I think that people just aren't accustomed to it, and I'm guilty of being one of them, especially going uphill and like, oh.
Used to be fifty at the top of the hill.
Right.
It got raised, delayed or reduced to forty-five. This has been almost two years ago now. And then north of that area, it went from fifty-five to fifty. So I, I don't think it's an unreasonable speed through there.
Yeah.
And we're making every effort that we can.
Okay.
As time allows to be there in the school zone. So, I mean, by all means, if we want to ask ODOT to do a, a speed survey again, we can. But keep in mind, it's not just them looking at speeds. There's, you know, how many accidents have been in that area? There's a number of factors that play into it with the definition of an urban district being part of the code really drives their decision. So we, we certainly can make an attempt, see what they say.
Okay.
And that's, that's all I've got.
Did you want to talk too? Because I have it on my agenda. We kind of chatted about it after the work session before this meeting about the roundabout.
Yes.
Um, just so the folks at home know, um, and the people here in the audience, there was social media discussion about a roundabout at the, on the six oh six and Ridge Road. And ODOT is going to be pursuing that in the next four to five years. And they said it was one of the highest accident areas.
Yeah, it is. And that location is on the Ohio Governor's Accident Reduction List. The funding was approved for that project two weeks ago. I spoke to Andy Blazek from District Three ODOT this afternoon. That project is in its design phase and it's tentatively scheduled for, he told me twenty-four, you know, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, and I've also been told that it could be as far out as fiscal year twenty-seven. So somewhere in that span of time, I, I think you're going to see a roundabout. And, you know, I know there's some, you know, there's some concerns about it because it impacts people. So.
But as soon as we get the information, we try to provide it to the public. So I wanted to do that. Um, also, while I've got you here, I spoke with Dan Becker this morning. The intersection of Waymouth and Stony Hill.
Okay.
Um, and if the trustees are in agreement, um, I'd like to put a cross-traffic-does-not-stop sign there. That is a area where we have a lot of accidents. It's an odd angled intersection. And the traffic on Waymouth Road doesn't stop, and we oftentimes have people go right through the stop sign and cause issue there. So if the trustees are in agreement, I'd like to pursue a, a county sign that the county will install and.
Dan said he could do that because I called the county two weeks ago and they told me, um, it was ODOT I had to contact because I contacted ODOT about a week and a half ago for that exact request to put that. And when I called the county, they said it's state route.
Well, I think Stony Hill is the county, county road where you would put it by the stop sign. That the cross-traffic doesn't stop. Waymouth is the state route.
Right.
So you wouldn't need it on that section. You need it where the stop sign is, which is Stony Hill.
Yeah, I, I mean, as long as, as long as it gets done.
But not the cross-traffic-do-s not stop, does it?
I, I don't know why they need, ODOT would need to approve putting those signs. There, there's clearly, it's for safety.
Yeah.
And I don't know why we would have to jump through hoops to do that.
Dan Becker told me just get your trustees to agree and we'll get them in.
Then that's up to you. I would suggest to do it. I mean, I'm in favor of it.
Perfect. I will let him know. And if there's an ODOT issue, then I'll call ODOT. That is all I have.
Good luck.
That's all I have.
Does anyone else have anything for Police Chief Setner? Thank you for being here.
Any?
Anyone from the audience have anything for Police Chief Setner?
Right.
Oh.
Pops kids in claws?
It is going to be, uh, December tenth. And if you reach out to Detective Kenny, he could probably fill you in on more details. And I will not be there. I will be flying back from California that day. But I have already gotten someone to step in and make pancakes and sausages.
Oh, who's going to be behind the grill this year? Is it a surprise?
Do they get the elf?
I don't know that they make an elf suit that big. We'll, we'll see what we can do.
Okay, well, now my mind is reeling. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you very much, Chief. Our Chief Gross and Bob.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, first is request rescind motion on June seventh uh, of this year to buy three radio straps and three carrying cases from Motorola cost of two hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is request, oh, I'm sorry.
Did you say aye?
I did.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear you.
Next is request appropriations for three hundred dollars and fifteen cents for three radio strands and the anti-sway strap and the carrying cases through Amazon. So this was through the Marx Radio Grant that we got. The radio straps they sent us were not the correct radio straps. So we had to go through another vendor to, to get the radio straps that were, um, fit our radios.
Amazon.
Amazon.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is request modify motion that was on June twenty-first of this year. For Schedule B Maintenance Service through W W Williams for the service of all our vehicles for additional eight hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-four cents.
What? What was the total cost?
Uh, total cost is, the original motion was five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, so Schedule B service multiple vehicles or?
It was for thirty-one, thirty-one, two and thirty-two. Yep, okay. Sorry, it was all three of the big vehicles. And the grand total came to fifty-five hundred twenty dollars and eighty-four cents.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Sure, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Would close the up on that, Chief?
That was just on the shop fees of, I had to have them fix a couple of the airlines or, uh, valves on some of the trucks in there. Just the, the older wear and tear of the vehicles and we're still can't even get parts for the tanker right now either.
Second.
Thank you.
Moved in second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is request approval to move firefighter EMT Matt Marinella from fourteen thirty-five to his full rate of fifteen seventy-six. Part of the organizational minutes effective immediately.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor, say aye.
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 Next is request approval to hire firefighter paramedic Victor Ergen at a rate of fourteen thirty-five per hour with a probationary period of one, one year effective immediately. We will be swearing him in at the fire station tomorrow. He has, um, four or five years with Cleveland EMS and he took a job a year ago with Canton, or I'm sorry Akron Fire full time.
Wow.
And he's friends with a lot of the, we have four or five Cleveland EMS guys, so he's friends with all of those guys.
Okay.
They're recruiting for us.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor, say aye.
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 This last, I want to skip over to that I, I just, um, put on today, uh, before that last one. Uh, request, um, to repair the block heater on the generator through Cummings, not to exceed thirteen hundred dollars.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye. I was just looking through my phone. I'm like, I don't see it on the.
Yeah, I put, I printed up this morning. Uh, the next is a good one. Uh, rescind motion from eight sixteen, twenty twenty-two through W W Williams for the brake repairs on, uh, engine thirty-one that was to exceed, not to exceed thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars. That was all covered by warranty and manufacturer.
Done.
I got to confirm that they paid everything. Thank you.
We've been waiting until we got that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, the last is I like to request, request executive session, uh, for appointment of personnel. Should go really quick.
Do you want to do that now?
I would prefer, yes. It should, I think it should go fast.
All right, Martha, would you mind doing a roll call for that?
Uh, obviously.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, sure. Yes.
Oh, cool. Did you make a motion for that?
Yes.
We did.
Make a motion to adjourn into executive session, um, for appointment of personnel.
I know, but did someone second it? I think we jumped.
Yes.
Jumped. I'll second.
Okay, sorry. I'm all night, you know.
No, you're, you're probably right on.
Welcome back. They probably don't like to speak. Hello, my name is Joel.
Good morning.
Good, how's folks?
On vacation. They're in town. How are you?
I'm good. Public speaking portion, you can read up anything you want.
Yeah, we discussed a lot here.
Well, yeah, but you can, you can read this still talk. It doesn't matter.
It didn't matter, right?
Probably not, but. I don't know, roundabouts are funny. I mean, I don't have to tell my husband it's like using it, but he doesn't know what to do. I don't know when they made a determination. Or I don't know the science behind why a roundabout is deemed safe and, um, for a check.
You won't convince mother. They're putting one in up in Marvel.
Yeah, I heard about that.
It's only three months a year. It's a problem.
Yeah.
They're both straight roads coming in.
Yeah, I know.
They could have put a light up. And it all, a light cost more than a roundabout. So they ripped up all the thing. They've been doing it all since, uh, August now or something, beginning of August. And everybody tried out there to stop because of the winter. Nobody does. They don't even need the roundabout.
They don't need a light.
When you got trucks and boats and campers and, you know, it's just going to be a mess. A light would have done exactly, you know, what it needed.
And you get them in a roundabout, that's one lot of them.
But I mean, they, I was on Zoom meetings where they tried to stop it, you know, when, you know, nobody was for it except. And no matter what you talk to them, oh, it's safer. It's, uh, cheaper, you know, how they come up cheaper than a traffic light, I don't know. Because like from August or like now September to like April. Nobody's up there. It's not a problem.
That was quick.
Yeah, we drive out here, you know, to stop it. They nowhere. No. We couldn't get water to go down. But it's a, it's a mess. They're probably getting there completely, you know. You'll have that whole year of somebody gets up there and tells them.
That's it. Well, especially people who, maybe a membership card, it's where they live. And they're like. At least, I don't. And you know, it's in time to register.
Should have.
Oh, no.
I, I don't know. Well, we don't have any. Ask the cops. They have two ways around. You could ride around the middle of things, but you know, not. And, uh, which are the rules in the roundabouts? Well, I don't know. It's kind of a free draw. That's what they're telling you.
Really? See, that's what I'm saying. I mean, who has to ride away? Get a race in the roundabout or be entering the roundabout.
I think the one.
I, well, I just, you know, we're just a technology.
We're both a little bit, they give you, you know, information. Where it's going to be taken up properly wide right there. They'll just, they'll find out. They should have quite a test. Yeah, you know, they have rerouted all the gas lines, the water lines. They do the electricity. You know, it makes it now. That's a lot of money.
You know.
I don't know how they can do it. So I got a neighbor, some right on that corner.
No, they don't. But people think it's like.
Who knows? Right, I didn't hear anything about it. Seems a lot. My neighbor across the street's continuing to talk about your work and running that form. And across the street, there's a hospital. Like right on the corner of Sierra. Unless they're going to move the road. I'm not sure. I don't know. I'd be curious to see what I am. Where does he go?
Um. Oh, I'm hoping to make this one, you know, to invite everybody. But yeah, that's how it's always used to be. How you see plans. Roundabout.
Somebody did a lot of wrong call. I believe, not that, because I'm checking out. And they save lives, save money, you know, do all the stuff.
Just crazy.
They put the roundabout down there by that, now people will kill them now. They're coming over that, what?
Medicine store.
Four ninety or whatever, up the hill. It's by steel yards and then it comes around like this. So people were coming out. When the lights are ready, you had to break to get out. Now it's time to fall, you know, when they're coming like fifty miles. I think these four, five people go there, you know, with different. I mean, it's the dumbest thing that you could do by this. No, it will work well, like three years, it wasn't a problem, you know.
I don't know.
And. I mean, all that. Six oh six. Intersections. And he stopped and stops. Five years. He's been there six, four years. We see them all. He built his. He's been around a long time.
I know, my goodness, okay.
But like in Marvel, that's the trouble was if you wanted to go across one sixty-three. Well, it was difficult because, you know, the cars were coming on one side and when they stopped, they were here, you know, you couldn't do it. Where everybody up there, you know, well, you make the right, you turn around at this and then go back. Yeah, I don't, I probably got around. I mean, it was. You know, you wait for somebody for now, you're ranking out three foot poles, you know, and he can't pull out because they're coming fifty-five down the hill on one sixty-three. And, uh, so, you know, you got to be careful what you're pulling out in front of because you, you know, even if he's. Laying the block. A corner back pole isn't going to get going at that. And now like in October. And now like in October. Through July.
Are you, do you have it all?
There's not a rock in it all. It was just. I am truly curious to see where it is, you know, how it backs up or what it does, you know. Because it. If they don't have it truly right.
It's covered in plastic.
You're gonna be sitting here waiting because they're in the roundabout.
Yeah, we're the woods.
They put them in family and the guy is up there telling you keep back in the wall. There was another one. They put somewhere they had to take it back. It's whoever's. If truly it's only a few months. You have traffic lights down. You know, you're going sixty five and then there's a traffic. Go yellow and they don't turn their thing right on. They work.
I'm not sure.
So for next month, what will you finish? There's that. And at times. Oh. He led me to nineteen forty seven.
Well, I had somebody.
Okay, and then for this.
Massively open area.
You look pretty good.
I know, just for two guys.
Yeah, just. No brothers?
It was just a bunch of big beams. So it's really just.
So then you put drywall. You're just gonna go on. Oh, wow. Didn't bring out.
It's probably more on bags.
Did you guys design it yourself? Like actually some. I know Joe don't have a warrant.
I I mean, we'll go to this. Our show up times. This is in there two something there and drive for an hour or so.
Remember Mr. Florian? Yeah, so I do.
Yeah, so we call her first. And what would a great. Be able to get home.
No, he told me this was for the kids. Hey, you know, I share with you. So what is your mom?
All right, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn out of executive session at seven oh four P M. Seconded by Asher. Martha, may I have you do a roll call? Yes.
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 I wrote it down six. Hold on. Six forty eight P M.
Thank you.
I fifteen.
Would like to make a motion to appoint Sean Barrett as interim assistant chief to the fire. Chief at an increase pay of twenty dollars per hour.
Second.
At a rate of twenty.
Sorry, rate. We're not increasing him by twenty.
No, no, we're not.
At a rate of twenty dollars per hour.
Second it as amended. All right, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, chief, anything else?
No, not this time.
Are you doing your Santa's blood this year?
Yes.
Now.
Yeah. Effective day, effective immediately, I would like.
November fifteenth. I'm sure you'll be calling him. I'm sure you'll be calling.
I will. Um, our Santa's sleigh Christmas parade is going to be December eighteenth. I believe kickoff will be ten o'clock. What till three o'clock? Watch social media for the route, the updated route this year. And Jen will be live tweeting it or whatever she does on Facebook. To tell everybody where we're headed and timeframe and all that.
Very good.
Yeah, it's exciting.
And I just want to handle this before you leave. Um, just for Melissa and Jack's. Information, there were some questions recently raised at the fire department regarding the shift incentive. On because of some wording in the resolution. So I would like to amend resolution zero six two one two two dash zero two. From June twenty first to enact a bonus incentive for the fire department shift members. Any member in good standing that work an additional three twelve hour shifts per quarter. Will receive a five percent bonus for the time they have worked for that quarter. Any member in good standing that work an additional six twelve hour shifts. Will receive a seven percent bonus for the time that they worked during that quarter effective July first, twenty twenty two.
Thank you.
Cleans it up.
Yes.
Second. And that was a resolution.
Yeah, obviously.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Martha. Very good. Anything else for fire?
Oh, thank you very much. Thanks for all that that came out. The training went excellent. Um, two long days of training with the our guys in mutually departments, which helps for our. Training requirements through ISO and it burned down how I I really wanted it to burn down onto itself into the basement. So I appreciate anybody that came out and watched and it was, it was a good time.
It was really warm.
Yes, yes, it was. It was really warm on the inside, too. Yeah.
Thank you. That was great. All right, anybody else have anything for for chief Russ and Bob? Anyone from the audience? We're free to go, sir.
Okay, very good. Anything on, anything you want to bring up about the senior housing or anything you want me to make comments on anything like that?
Comments right now.
Okay, that's why I just want to make sure. Thank you guys very much. Have a good night. Be careful. Thank you, guys.
Service superintendent Bahari.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
Very good. Uh, first thing that I have is request appropriations for emergency repair to unit number thirteen by Valley Truck Centers. At a cost of two thousand three hundred forty six dollars and fifty nine cents. We were doing our winter P M's over the trucks and overlooking them and noticed that the train lines were leaking on it and then it needed replaced. So that's what this emergency expense is so we can get our truck back and get it rolling.
So moved.
Second, moved and seconded all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Um, second thing on the list is request appropriations to replace the door operator on door number ten through ASAP Door Company Inc. At a cost of one thousand four hundred ninety dollars. It's been broken for a while. We've been lifting it manually and it's it's time to do it for the winter. So that way we can start getting these trucks in and out. That way we can keep them clean and keep them washed when they're going out in the salt.
So moved.
Second, moved and seconded all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then there's one other thing that I don't have on there. As everybody knows, we've been looking to try to purchase a truck here for a while, trying to find something. We have found one. We went out and got a state quote bid on this truck and Liberty ended up beating it. And for the O R C one twenty five point oh four, this purchase can be made upon the same terms, conditions, specifications at a lower price. So the one from Liberty there, as you can see, the purchase price, you know, they beat out state bin. I shouldn't say state, but the O dot contract one one eight dash two two like quite a bit for the same truck.
That's amazing.
And this one's sitting on the lot, so.
And you've been waiting.
Well, it's been pre-built and anything they're building now with the new price increases is just. It's crazy, new price increases, so.
Do you want to make the resolution to purchase?
Yes.
Make a resolution to purchase. Now write this up for you, Martha. Twenty twenty three Ford F seven fifty. From.
Liberty.
Liberty Ford. In the total amount of one hundred thirty five thousand four hundred and twenty two dollars.
Second.
Obviously.
Yes.
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 Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Picking it up tomorrow?
Um, he's just letting he's a P O to hold it, Martha. So if I can just say that tomorrow or he said.
Liberty in a out east, which Liberty?
So Canton's the one that has it, but their commercial rep is through.
Maple.
Maple Heights, so that's he's been the one we've been working with because he's the commercial government sales manager. Yeah. Yeah.
And just to thank Mike, he put a lot of work into it. Not only did it beat the. State price, but when's the next available one? We get like two years.
Anything on state bed right now? You're looking at two year weight, so.
Well, you beat state price by about forty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Significant.
Well, that's like I said, anything getting built now. Price increases are just absolutely crazy to try to get anything, so. Luckily it was built. They said everything we had to put on this truck to make sure that it was in comparison. It's all gonna be in by, and he gave me a timeline, probably by the end of December, January area, it should be complete. Maybe I this is like anything, we still haven't received our F T fifty yet. It was supposed to be there last week, so that we ordered what a year ago.
Yeah.
So. Um, oh, and one last thing, update on Bethany Lane.
Yes.
They, uh, everything is poured. They just have to come back and do some aprons. Pretty much everything's done. They did a real good job. Like I said, Tri-More does awesome work, so they did it very quick, too. Um, they were supposed to pour the aprons today, but and I know the county has a cutoff the fifteenth, but I think they're pushing it back to. Supposed to warm up a little bit, so the warmer the better.
Very good. Thank you.
But other than that, that's that's about it.
So before Mike leaves, we did meet with the county up on.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
Mattingly, not Mattingly.
Boston.
Boston the other day. And we're, uh, North Rowan was there as well, so we're waiting to hear from them about a. Basically a joint use agreement there for maintenance up there and. Uh, what they will do with us to do the repairs on that road. Once we get something in place, then we'll move forward with the county engineers on designing what we want to do there.
So are they gonna pers- present a maintenance agreement or are we working with them? How's that work?
We're looking to see if they have anything else. They're they're taking it, the gentleman who was there taking it back to their council.
Okay.
Those they have to go through their meeting process, just like we do, so.
So if if they don't have anything, then the county has a couple of samples they can provide us to.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, we have samples.
Yes.
The other thing is we went with the county engineers to look at some. Uh, drives up on.
Lionswood.
Lionswood that some new aprons that were poured on the south side of that street. And after talking with Tom Wilson, the permits aren't required for those replacements, so it's just the new construction. So. Relative to those drives coming all the way to the road surface. I'm gonna ask the county engineers if they can draft some language that we can put in a letter to send to those homeowners and just, uh, you know, tell them that. That we're not liable for any damage because they constructed it outside of the design parameters.
Might want to put language in about like if we go to repave that, how it's gonna have to go into those dry aprons. Because it'll probably go over the concrete, just so they know, and they probably won't be happy about. That when you don't follow specifications, that's kind of is what it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's a county road, not a township road? Very good. Anything else?
We just need a signature.
Anyone sign this? Anybody from the audience have anything for service superintendent Bahari? While you're signing, Jack, I'm just gonna remind you guys, I think that Mr. Wilson put a note in each one of your mailboxes. And you probably have this letter in front of you that this is a lot split. And he just needs us to go ahead and sign. This is on River Road. He just needs us to go ahead and sign the.
Special pen?
Yeah, but it doesn't have to happen right now. Whenever the meeting's done, we can do that. The special pen is there. Um, do you have anything else for service? You're good. Okay, so I'm gonna move right into zoning. Uh, we have, we received the resignation of zoning commission member Bill Spelman. You may remember he was appointed late last year. Um, in his letter, he expressed an interest in an alternate position. He cannot commit to a five year term. He's a very valuable member to the zoning commission. He brought a lot of expertise and experience that was really well received this year. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of zoning commission member Bill Spelman effective. Twelve thirty one twenty two.
Second.
Seconded by Asher. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And with that said, we have an open position for the zoning commission. And because we kind of went through this process at the beginning of the year where we did a lot of interviewing, I think that we should probably do that again. I'd like to make a motion to post that zoning commission position so we can figure out who might take that position before the end of the year. Um, and I'd like to post it until. Um, and I'd like to post it until do you want to do like December ninth? Okay, perfect.
Do you want to tell Suzanne or do you want me to?
I will tell her. Do I need a motion for that, Martha? I didn't think so. Perfect. And the next, um, step in the text and map amendment process that the, the zoning commission has been going through is for the trustees to schedule a hearing. So I would like to suggest that we do it prior to our regular trustee meeting on December sixth, uh, which is, the meeting is at six-thirty. I wanted to see if we could schedule the hearing at six o'clock. The trustees are in agreement. I'm just thinking about that while I'm looking at you looking at me. Five thirty?
Give you a little more.
Bless you.
I think you, I, I would make a motion.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion, if the trustees are in agreement, to, um, hold the trustee text and map amendment hearing for December sixth at five thirty PM.
Hold on, I'm checking my personal. Second.
Seconded by Asherall. All in favor, say aye.
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 Very good. Tell her about that as well.
Yes, I will tell her about that as well.
Five thirty?
Yes, sir, five thirty.
Just a skosh later than we were here today.
I was here at eight o'clock this morning. Having a great day. Um, I do not have anything else for zoning except to report that with regard to the senior housing entrances, um, I met with the prosecutor this morning as well as Dan Becker from the Medina County Engineers with our chief Grossenbaugh, zoning chairman Fisher, and zoning inspector Tom Wilson. Uh, they have modified their plan and they will be asked to come back to the zoning commission at their December first meeting to have the modification reviewed for approval or denial. So that's the update on that. Are there any questions for zoning?
Was there, you, you said you were going to go back and find out what happened with the roadway for Pride One?
That is what I just talked about.
There's, they're just gonna
There's a modification that they're going to present to the zoning commission at the December first meeting.
But I mean, what happened prior to it? How they ended up putting it in without?
Well, they meet the scale.
Yeah.
And, um, the problem is the fire truck could not, because of the way the entrance came in, it goes this way and the truck cannot make that turn. So what they've proposed is a sidewalk that runs alongside the roadway that will be built to the same specifications as the roadway. It will be a colored concrete, so it will have a different look to it, but it will be the same exact specifications as the roadway and it will allow for the engine to go in and out. But because it's a modification to the final plat that the zoning commission approved, they have to come back and have the zoning commission take a look at it.
So what was approved? Even though they constructed it to that standard, it didn't meet the requirements of the fire department?
Correct.
So that's probably something we should look at for
We had a conversation with council this morning and we will do a better job on that for future. It was approved by the fire department.
Okay. You're good. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not have anything else for zoning and I don't have anything for cemetery, so trustee Asherall moved straight along to you.
Um, I already did the amendment to the resolution. Um, the other thing I just wanted to bring up, because I did not see it on anyone else's agenda, was going back to, um, the ARPA funds. Um, I know I had mentioned this a couple of months ago, so one thing I wanted to throw out there again is, you know, we've been building that wish list um, that Jack sent you for, um, the solar, the new roof, redoing the parking lot, I believe, for here for town hall. So I really like the idea of creating that wish list, because they are smaller projects, which that was one thing that Martha had asked of, don't piecemeal everything together, use it, you know, one big project. And I just want to throw this out there again, that if we wanted to look at using all of that eight hundred and fifty-two thousand, applying it to the roads, so that it's done, we know that's going to satisfy the requirements and then reallocating that money out of the roads fund, reallocate that money and apply it to our wish list so that we can still say at the end of the day, this is what we use those funds for. We were able to do this and this and this, but we're not against the wall with the timing of having to get everything done by twenty twenty-four. It's just something I wanted to put out there for discussion.
And considering now that we're waiting.
And, and so just, and whatever you guys just said, Adam, here, you know, whatever, I, obviously I've stated my preference for what Monique said, but how to do that is, is to put it entirely into a capital improvements fund. So therefore, then when you do decide, whatever capital improvement, you do decide, that same amount of dollars has been appropriated into that capital improvements fund, which would only give use, it wouldn't go into buildings and this and that and here and there, improvement of sites. It would just be in its own separate fund within the general fund. Whereas right now, it's in the twenty-two seventy-three fund. So, but again, that, that's just where the money could go if that occurred.
So Monique, do you have anything else on your wish list? I know you talked about solar.
Solar and roof and, um, that is, that's the number one on my wish list, um, because I think that that would have a great benefit to the township, but then that's not going to take all the money. So I also would like to see, so it's something that the entire township can benefit from, what can we do in the old fire station?
Okay, so do you have a suggestion or a list of what you'd like to see over there?
Um, I will send you both an email of things that I would like to see and I'll try and get some, um, some quotes, so we know what we're dealing with dollar-wise.
Well, I think the point that I'm trying to make right now is if we come, we culminate this wish list and we send it off to Beck, who is the attorney that we agreed to utilize, um, we can determine what is covered, what isn't covered, and potentially work on the resolution language to do exactly what you said, to utilize the funds, make sure that we can do that and then create this capital improvement line with the extra money that we would just take from roads and put into the capital improvement fund.
Right. I just think that what I had suggested eliminates a lot of steps, because you don't have to, I mean, we don't even, we, would we even have to consult with Beck if we're going to use them?
To Melissa's point, though, you want to make sure you're going to target, if, you know, you're going to going to target legitimate projects. The, the, the purpose of the funding should remain the same.
We would need resolution.
The question is, is if we utilize it for a road project, do we have to go through her?
You, you would still have to go through the, um,
Attorney.
Bidding process and the prevailing wage process. And, and that, I think when we talked about it, that was my point. These are already built into a road project of that size. The engineer's office does all the specifications for us. Um, they prepare the bid package. They help us through that own pro- that whole process. And to remove that cumbersome nature that is required of the ARPA funds from nine or ten smaller projects, that would have to be done nine or ten times for every project, you know, that everybody has on their wish list. Whereas then if the monies are, it's not really a reallocation, but I guess that's a, a, a good term. It's the monies that you would save. Like the, if you paid for significant road project that is eight hundred and fifty-two thousand, then Mike might only have four or five hundred thousand dollars in the contracted service line of the general fund that he currently annually receives one point one or one point three million in. It, you're just transferring that appropriation to a capital improvement line. And you would, might still have to bid projects out, but they're not going to be, have to
Federal. Yeah.
Federal requirements that are part of this funding.
So I want to make sure we can do that and then garner the resolutions to move forward with Beck. That's, so what I would present to Beck would be, and Rebecca is the attorney that we, we hired. Um, I would present, these are the items on the wish list. This is what we would like to do and what's, what would a resolution look like?
You don't even know. You wouldn't even use this. Because that's not part of it. Your only resolution would be to apply eight hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for whatever contract or whatever amount. It might be a million-dollar project, but
But there's a specific resolution for the ARPA funds. That's one of the reasons.
Well, there is, but you are spending the ARPA funds. You're spending the ARPA funds with one
One time.
Yeah, but we need that resolution from him.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
But the other projects don't matter.
But the other, I understand that. Those are in a capital improvement line, but I need a resolution to spend the money the first time.
Well, you're going to need a resolution to expedite the funding. That's your first thing.
Right.
I think I'd send that to you.
There are, yes, you did.
Yeah.
So that, that is your first step. And then from there, you can choose to, um, I can't remember what the, uh, can't remember what the name of it was. I'm sorry. Um, that process, but it expedites any future expenditures of ARPA money.
But if I'm understanding the process correctly, we can't make that resolution to expedite the funding until we know what we're going to be using it on. So we all need to get on the same page first and then we make that.
And I think having him look at the wish list and say, this is what's covered, this is what's not covered.
You, I mean, you, you can do that. It's not necessary.
I, I understand.
General fund monies.
I understand.
That aren't going toward road work in lieu of
But it would be good information to have moving forward if we decided to go a different way. I mean, I just think the more information we garner, the better. So if we can get the wish list, I will send it to him with the ideology of what we've just proposed of using the funds for roads and then just reallocating those funds next year. I just think that, I just think that's extra work.
That's, that's what I'm trying to tell you. You're not reallocating. You are spending the ARPA funds.
Period.
And then in lieu of how those funds would, like a major, any expenditure of eight hundred and fifty thousand. If you don't have to pay that bill out of the general fund, you can then use that money for anything you want within statutory bidding requirements.
Right, I, I get that. The reallocation word is not the right word.
Yeah, reallocation is not a word you, we, we, it's not an appropriate word. It's not that we're trying to fool anybody or anything. We're just saying.
And it just, it kind of takes the handcuffs off, because we can use that money for however we want to use it.
And there's no timeline associated with it.
That's a major issue. If you recall with the CARES Act money, which was only half of what we got with these tranches, we were trying to find things to use it for. I mean, the Didi Medina County donation. We ended up using it for salaries. We ended up computers. I mean, we, like many communities that received that funding, bank bond didn't have a lot of COVID-related need.
Yeah.
And we were just trying to spend it. And I don't want to see that. You know, I don't want to be sitting there in, you know, the summer of twenty twenty-four saying, well, you know, we still got seventy-five thousand dollars left. What do we do now? I'd rather have it in the capital improvement fund and say
And we don't have a capital improvement fund anymore.
Oh, we have a fund line.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a capital improvement.
Just need to put money in it.
I think there might be a little.
Eight hundred and fifty-two thousand.
I don't put money in every fund line every year, but, but they're open fund lines.
So, but in light of the fact of the things that we're considering now and smaller projects and whatnot, it makes sense to do that, in my opinion.
If it's in a capital improvement line, you can do anything with it.
At any, anytime.
Right.
That money can sit there for Yeah.
Right. Right, so.
Hell freezes over. Agnes, have you been outside?
Um, okay, I feel like we have not, like, agreed to anything, so what do we want to do? Do we want to? Do we agree to this or not agree to this? Because I, I agree. I think Jim Larson said it at the last meeting, like, you gotta get on it. And to Martha's point at the last meeting, we're making next to nothing in interest on this, so.
I, I agree. I say move forward, use it for, uh,
I agree.
Road capital.
I agree too. I just, I would, if it goes into a cap and improvement fund, I would like water to be a priority for use. I don't want the water conversation to go away because the money is being used.
Well, we already agreed to have him look.
Well, we have to designate that, too. That's another conversation, but I, I just don't want that conversation to go away, because the water, the money's sitting in a capital improvement line instead of being an ARPA fund that we know will be used for infrastructure.
Well, we have to go around a capital improvement expenditure.
Mm-hmm.
And, and any potential infrastructure would go in a capital improvement line. That's how we fund, uh, the buildings we pay for and proposed additions and anything like that, so.
I'm just saying that if I agree to the, to this, which I think is a smart idea, I think there are a lot of benefits that come with it. I just don't want water to be pushed to the side of the conversation, that's all.
I don't know that it's pushing water to the side of the conversation, but based off of what Jeremy presented us with today, we don't even have half of what we would need for the water. So it's not that it's getting pushed to the side. It's the fact that we just, we don't have the money for it.
Well, we could save monies towards it and there are other grant opportunities and the county can get involved. There are a million different ways to, to make up the difference, but we need to garner the information to see if, how many people want it first.
Well, we're gonna send out the letter, um, and then we're gonna have to wait and see what the county said. I, I was kind of getting
Reason I'd like to do this, because that takes the pressure off of that timeline.
Right, right. I get that.
So do we agree for that? So I'll be ready for the next meeting to make the resolution to expedite.
Well, you, you're gonna get that?
I would have to get that from Beck.
Okay. All right.
Just tell them that, you know, if you guys have a consensus, you don't need a motion at this point, but you have a consensus that you would like to approach, um, the attorney with reviewing that option. And then what I would imagine is that he will prepare the language for you to do the expedited steps, authorize that. At this point, you will not actually spend the monies until you determine a road project that will meet that monetary amount. And so that would likely be
Valley Burke.
And, yeah, I mean, that's what we're all thinking, right? That's it. Um, that's what's needed to complete that huge project. And then in March, or likely March, usually that's about when the concrete bids come in.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you can allocate, make the resolution in, for that project, once you get those bids using the ARPA funding. And then in preparation of the specs, then you would make sure that all the specs and the prevailing wage and all that information is prepared to comply with the, uh, which the county engineers have been doing. That was the other benefit. A lot of other townships are using the ARPA money for, for road work, so this isn't going to be anything new for the engineer's office to, to prepare. They know what they need to provide, if that's the way you route you go.
Agreed?
Agreed. I'm still thinking. But you already agreed, so you don't need me.
So you will contact?
I will contact Beck. I just
Again, look, this is money we're likely going to spend out of the contracted service line next year anyway. All you're doing is you're basically taking that same amount of money and moving it into a capital improvement line that gives you guys more time to determine what you'd like to do. to determine what you'd like to do with your smaller project wish list. Like it.
I would like to allocate funds to it and see us put water in. Even if that takes 10 years.
And that's all I have.
Okay, trustee Sweattick.
I've done enough damage for one night.
I have a resolution, uh, for sale of materials to townships and villages that came from the Medina County engineers. This is, um, it was a resolution that the county commissioners had made. And so I wanted just to present it to you guys. Um, it's an agreement that I can read out loud. I don't know if it's a motion. It's resolution.
Resolution usually.
It doesn't give me the language, Martha. I'm winging it.
Can I see?
Yes, I was just gonna read the agreement. I was gonna do motion.
Just the.
I was just gonna do resolution to the agreement.
Materials.
Yes.
Oh.
If you go to the first sign page that's tabbed.
You just want to enter into agreement with Medina County and then to sell materials pursuant to, to purchase. You're just take the sell out of there, say to purchase.
Remove.
Resolution. Did see there, there's our, your whole face there.
All right. I'd like to make a resolution to enter an agreement with the township and villages.
No, no, you're making it with Medina County.
Medina County, yes, in agreement.
Buying.
I'm, I was just gonna say that. To buy materials pursuant to the authority granted in section three oh seven point one five of the Ohio revise code.
Second.
Second. Now I'm gonna have you do a roll call for me since.
Uh, Augustine.
Yes.
This way then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we had a quick conversation about a request for ODOT to do a study in front of the new elementary. I don't know if that's something this board wants to pursue, but I wanted to make sure I did my due diligence and brought the opportunity to you since ODOT had recommended it. Um, any thoughts on that?
You had mentioned, um, that the old school was a thirty five mile per hour zone.
I believe it is, but it might be.
On three oh three forty five. Um, I just. I mean, it doesn't cost us anything, but I, I don't see them changing it. I mean, they've got the flashing lights up there now. Um, you know, the old granger was on Ridge Road in Sharon, and that was forty five, fifty mile per hour um, school zone also. And I drive there every day and people just need to pay more attention. I don't know that the speed limit needs to be reduced.
Okay, trustee Sweattick, do you have an opinion on it?
Well, in light of what Chief Sanner offered, doesn't sound like it would do much, but, uh, I don't object to it.
I mean, it doesn't cost us anything to have them do a study.
Yeah, it doesn't cost us anything. So.
So I said, I don't object to it. I don't know that it'll do any good.
I don't know that it'll do any good either, but at least we've done our due diligence. If somebody comes back and says, why didn't you?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if it's gonna, if it's gonna make people feel better and it's not costing us anything, it's fine.
Perfect. I will let ODOT know that we agree to that. Um, I have a couple other things that, one of which is on the agenda, a couple other that are not the, um, employee manual that we only got maybe a third of the way through. That's being generous. I wanted to see if you wanted to do another work session? And if so, what your preferred date or time would be for that?
Not before a meeting.
Not before a meeting.
Just elongates the meetings. Um, I mean, is next week a crazy week for everybody? If we do it on Tuesday?
I could do it Tuesday.
And I could do Tuesday or Wednesday, but I don't know if that's, if anybody's going out of town or anything with the holiday.
I could do Tuesday. I don't, I'm gonna be cooking probably most of the day Wednesday.
Tuesday, four o'clock still?
Is that a good time for you? Or do you want to push it a little later?
No, four's fine.
How about you, Joe?
Um, I actually have police surgeons contract meeting the day at two. So.
Think you'll be out of that.
Do you want to do a five o'clock?
Well, let's do, let's do four and I can tell them go away. Pardon?
Two.
Two o'clock.
Should be able to be done by, at least get what they want.
It wasn't last time.
Okay.
We can always start without you. Oh, wait, no, we can't. You're the editor.
He's the, he's got the editing equipment. All right. So the twenty second at four o'clock.
Four o'clock.
I will let Suzanne know that date too. She's.
You, all right. You are notifying Suzanne for everything. I am taking it off my list.
Perfect. Thank you for that. And then, um, I would like to make a motion for the garden club to purchase holiday decor, not to exceed a hundred and seventy five dollars.
Do you? So my question on that was, do you?
Want to have the service department get it?
Yeah, because they can get the tax exempt. You don't have to deal with tax. So you can just make a motion.
Purchase?
Purchase.
Okay, so we'll make a motion to purchase holiday decor, not to exceed a hundred and seventy five dollars.
And then they can just look at those pictures.
I might have to go with them.
Well.
Those pictures are tiny.
You're correct.
Second.
Second advice, Sweattick, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. And then we had the SPCA donation. I don't know if you remember this from the last meeting. I actually forgot about it until I was reviewing the minutes. And we said we would come back to it. We're back. Any thoughts on a donation in twenty twenty one? We made a donation of two thousand dollars, which was very high for us. Not, that's not an average.
Very high.
Yeah. You know, I don't know if you want to do like five hundred dollar donation.
Fiscal officer have a recommendation?
I would at least maintain what we gave last year. That, that's a lot of intake for.
Forty two animals originating in our jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Forty two animals that came from Hinkley that went to the SPCA last year. That's a lot of animals.
I mean, it is. And you figure if you're paying personnel fifty dollars to come pick up an animal and then you're housing it and feeding it and.
Oh, do they pick it up? I thought we transported.
No, these are, these are calls for service.
That's what the police chief last year said. We should give them more.
Yeah. You know, I mean, it's.
Well, I'm fine with what we gave last year based off of.
Past practice.
Fiscal officers' recommendation.
Is, is Mr. Sweattick giving daggers?
I would, I would go halfway.
Jack, you don't have feral cats running around Hinkley because of that.
Well, or goats or horses.
I know.
Rarely cats.
Rave the dogs.
Okay, so what are we talking about? You're saying a thousand, you're saying two thousand?
We did two thousand last year?
Yes.
What did we do the year before?
I don't remember. It's not noted.
We've been incrementally going up and up because the intake has been going up and up.
So. All right, I would say two thousand dollars.
At this point, I'd like to make a motion to donate two thousand dollars to Medina County Society for the prevention of cruelty to animals.
Second.
Yeah. What is, what was the word you used so before? It wasn't donated, it was.
Oh.
Contribute.
Contribute.
Cause second amendment. Second amendment.
Second advice. Asher, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Was that an aye for?
That was an aye. And last but not least, the happy Hinkley holiday is scheduled for December third from five to seven in the old fire station bays. Santa Claus will be there. Hot cocoa, cookies, a tree lighting. It's gonna be fantastic. That's all I have. Martha.
Okay, I have a couple additional items. Sorry. First one is a motion to contract. Do you have it in the package?
Yes.
Maybe you guys have the paperwork. Um, a motion to contract with Charles Herson Associates to prepare the twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three Hinkley Township notes to the financial statement. It's filed for twenty twenty two, five hundred and twenty five dollars and twenty twenty three, five hundred and seventy five dollars. That's an audit requirement, um, and it has to be submitted through UAN, um, before we can close our books. So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 The second is a motion to pay our annual Amazon business prime fee in the amount of a hundred and seventy nine dollars. Um, I, I have to say, it saved us a boatload of money.
Yeah.
We're not only in, in items, but in the shipping fees that we were paying. Some of purchasing things.
Second.
And then, uh.
Well, let's, you want to do a quick vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 Do we share that password with residents for, so they can find, no?
There's only four of us who have access.
I was gonna say that we get music because I cancel my Prime music and my kid keeps asking me.
There's only three of us. Four Mike and Suzanne have asked me to buy something.
Do you have it on Alexa at home?
No. Um, and then the third is a, a, a motion, um, adopting a new resolution that amends the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. By all means, someone can read that resolution. Besides me.
Being resolved by the Board of Trustees of Hinkley Township Medina County, Ohio, in accordance with the provisions of law as previously adopted a tax budget for the next succeeding fiscal year commencing January the first, twenty twenty three. And whereas the Budget Commission of Medina County, Ohio, has certified its action thereon to this board together with an estimate by the county auditor of the rate of each tax necessary to be levied by this board and what part thereof is without and what part within the ten mil limitation. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Hinkley Township Medina County, Ohio, that the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and its certification be and the same are hereby accepted. And be it further resolved that there be and is hereby levied on the tax duplicate of said township, the rate of each tax necessary to be levied within and without the ten mil limitation. And be it further resolved that the fiscal officer of this board be and is hereby directed to certify, certify a copy of this resolution to the county auditor of said county.
So moved. But second, so moved.
As you say, um, and, and this is, uh, required because of the, the passage of the second tier level. It changes, changed our and then our certification of our rates for twenty twenty three.
Okay.
Um, Augustine?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Yes.
And, and just, um, when you talk to your department head or if you guys have any purchases, please try to get any major purchases or or at least so we can have purchase orders done before the end of the year. We can close up some, some things and be able to put as much money as we can into next year's budget. Oh, you know what? I just spun it. Sorry. Uh, six million, four hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars, of which one million, seventy five thousand, one hundred and twenty three dollars and thirty eight cents is in pooled investments and five million, three hundred and thirty seven thousand, six hundred and thirty six dollars and sixty two cents are in primary checking.
Very good. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills for three hundred and thirty five thousand, three hundred and thirty six dollars and forty nine cents. Seconded by Asher, all in favor, say aye.
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 Yeah, one more thing.
You do?
I do.
I thought you were done. You didn't even want to go when it was your turn.
I want to go into a two minute executive session to discuss matters of employee compensation.
Two minute executive session at?
That's what Jess said.
No, mine will be.
Okay, so.
Second.
And Martha, we're gonna note that's seven fifty two.
In employee compensation.
Yes, that's what you said, right, Jack?
Yes.
Only two seconded?
Mm hmm.
Augustine?
Yes.
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 Too Christmas. That was not you.
We're stinking.
Yeah.
Record. Report. Those don't know what the fuck underneath reported though.
Okay.
Yeah.
See what I mean?
And you got your glasses on.
And so they, they hit the wrong key. Gets better. It was nice. They say it was so loud. Somebody bought tickets. People don't want tickets.
We didn't even sit down.
Like to make a motion to adjourn out of executive session at seven fifty five. No decisions.
Yes. With no decision being made?
No decision being made.
Decision being made, seconded by Asher.
Augustine?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oh, is there anything else from the board? No, we will take public comment. Any questions or comments?
I, I do have a question.
Would you mind stepping up to the podium just so that the folks virtually can hear?
Virtually hearing.
Yes. And yes, we will need your name for the record, sir.
My name is Richard Beck.
Hello, Mr. Beck.
Hello, Ms. Augustine. Uh, my concern is roundabout. I understand what the police chief said. It's pretty much in Ohio Department of Transportation's hands. As I own the corner at one of that said proposals, I could see me standing to lose property value all the way around. And I'm wondering if there's anything that my fine elected officials of Hinkley Township can, uh, do to preempt or with this. I mean, I'm a Hinkley citizen, been here sixty years. Not telling you my age.
Twenty nine.
Yeah, twenty one. Sixty years in Hinkley, some years somewhere else. And it's just a genuine concern of one. I personally don't like roundabouts. Okay, that's, that's my personal opinion. Uh, made a comment to a young lady over here. I says, people can't even understand a stop sign. How are they gonna understand a roundabout? Every accident at that intersection, as I've been here sixty years, I'll say virtually every accident at that intersection is people blowing the stop sign at six oh six heading east. They're not stopping. I could take you, well, anyone could take movies of it all. Anyone set a police officer up there, they might stop if they don't see them or if they see them, but they blow through it all the time. I recall two real tragic deaths that happened at that intersection. Both of them was young ladies blowing the stop sign. Seaman mixer got one of them. And the last, well, and I recall a motorcycle. And the last, well, and I recall a motorcycle guy that, two other young ladies, and I watched that guy lay in the intersection for an hour from my front porch step. Uh, anyhow, getting back to my original point, I know it's, it's just me roundabout, gonna, gonna devalue my property terribly much, would you like to live next to roundabout? And I'm just, I'm gonna take whatever it's worth now and probably cut that in half because I sure the heck wouldn't want to move into next one of them.
Yeah.
I plan to living and dying in Hinkley, of course, obviously, but I just want to make it, I object to it, I oppose it, and I would hope that our township people could shed some light to ODOT or whoever they would need to on that matter, that's pretty much all I have to say.
I appreciate your comments, and I, um, I feel very badly for you. Unfortunately, as trustees, we don't have any say on that road because it's not our road, so.
Property is.
State road. Um.
Property's yours, isn't it? I mean, I'm, maybe I'm, I'm dumb, I thought Hinkley Township owned the property in Hinkley, I just rent it, of course, by paying my taxes every year, but.
State route.
It's a state route.
Two state routes.
Yeah.
Hmm, we don't, we don't have any, any.
Would you have any idea who determined this roundabout, instead of putting a traffic light there? Yeah, I, I heard all the stuff about the studies, I've been kind of, I don't want to say lied to, that's kind of a strong word, but I've been kind of told different things and all of a sudden, you know, one of my neighbors actually come and told me about it, which I don't see here right now, but here and there, here and there, I just.
Somebody was here earlier and had conversation with me, we had a four o'clock meeting and he came up and expressed concern as well, and I imagine he lives catty quarter to you or across the road.
Yeah, he owns the big property, catty corner to me.
Yes, and so, um.
If, that's who I know it is, so.
I, I can steer you to ODOT, I can get you a phone number, and maybe they can, I, I.
Who would have the plans on this?
ODOT, this is a state.
You all wouldn't have any idea what they're gonna cut through or do to decimate that corner, sorry.
They, they reach out when it's time to put a shovel in the ground, coordinate that, oh, you're gonna be closed and that kind of thing. You, you can sure as, reach out to your congress folks, Ohio Congress.
Okay, nothing the township really can do.
I wish.
That was the first thing I thought.
So does, so does a Hinkley resident, to be quite honest with you, you know, so.
I, I, it's gonna take a lot of all, all four properties right there, it's gonna have to, because the roundabouts are.
Well, it depends on the plan, I mean, I could design that where it wouldn't take, uh, the guy that's got a house sitting right on the corner's property, and I could design it so it wouldn't touch my property, but that's not here and there. They just straighten the road six oh six, move it. But then the other people are still gonna have the issue, and I don't want to throw anybody under the bus of course, so.
Yeah, we didn't even know about it, I got a, I, I got a message from somebody, and then it was on Facebook, and then I made some phone calls because they don't even contact us to tell us that they're even proposing it.
Doesn't seem right, does it?
No.
Alright, thank you very much for listening.
I'm so sorry, thank you.
Gentleman named Jim, I don't know his last name.
Anyone else in the audience have any questions or comments? Okay, like to make a motion to adjourn at eight oh one PM?
Second.
Seconded by Astral, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.